So I'm gonna call our meeting to order at 7:32. And welcome our guests, welcome to our meeting. Are there agenda revisions? Public comments? Do you guys wanna say anything?
Uh, yeah. We're here for, uh, talk about Black Lives Matter flag. And how we practically want an All Lives Matter flag put up.
Will you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Carter Pelzal.
I'm Tonya Ralph.
And I'm Isabella Schelz.
Do you wanna introduce yourself?
I'm Christopher Meyer, I'm just here to support.
We're also here for the Black Lives Matter flag. So this is a time to make comments. We are also gonna discuss our, um, what do we call it? Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Belief Statement. A little, just a little bit later on in our agenda. But if you wanna make a statement now, now's the time to make it. Usually the board accepts those statements. We don't usually converse back and forth at this time when we have board comments.
I have one question before we start. What if all the other tables all go to this school? Why wouldn't all this be done all together at once? So that everybody's on the same page and that you all don't make the decision for all the other districts?
I'm not sure, are you talking about the diversity? We introduced it tonight to all the boards there. Maybe you weren't there.
You were referring to the flag. So you introduced the flag to all the boards?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I think he's asking why, why we made the decision about the flag.
Is that?
And not, and didn't involve the other boards in that decision.
Is that what you're asking?
I guess, I just assumed that all the other tables, you know, that do go to U32 would be involved in this whole discussion.
Those are, there's six, there are actually seven different boards. Each elementary school has a school board, U32 has a school board. And the meeting that was in there is the full board, so it's all the boards together. So there's business that each individual school does. And then there's business that we do together as a full board, it's called.
I understand, but, am I wrong? But did you all sit at the same table? And not at each one of you at every other table? All the kids from each one of those tables go to this school, correct? Alright, so.
Eventually, eventually.
Correct, but you're taking the information for this district and going to your table? Just like when the gentleman said, stood up and said, "I believe that everything is, uh, in disagreement and that we're all done with this." And then the lady stood in the back and said, "Well, no, we're not all for this." You know, if you're not all on the same page and all at the same meeting, how do you get anywhere?
So I'm gonna back up for a second. This is time for board comment. I'm inviting you to make a comment. We're not gonna engage in discussion right now. Later on, we have on our agenda the diversity policy. And so we can talk about it then. We've had three or four meetings that were warned. They've been videotaped so that the public can see the conversation that we've had, the discussion, the things that we've wrestled with over the last two months, three months?
Couple months.
Maybe even more than that. So I'm gonna welcome you guys to make a comment. And then we'll go on with our agenda. And I don't know, did you wanna start, Carter?
Okay, like, uh, what would a comment look like? Okay, sorry. Just like saying, like, "Bye, we're here."
Exactly, exactly. And it's not, it's not an engaged conversation. It's not a question in the end for time, it's a comment.
Alright, yeah, I think, I'm, I'm here to talk about the political nature of the BLM flag and how schools should be neutral.
Um, yeah, okay, Sires wrote kind of a short paragraph. It said, "We are here today hoping you'll hear us out in raising an All Lives Matter flag. We think it's important to work together and unite to end racism. Instead of picking out one race and just helping one, we can help all. Every single race has to deal with racism. Racism is awful and so wrong, but sadly still exists today. We can stop segregation and stop racism. We all just need to work together. This is why we feel we should raise an All Lives Matter flag. This brings everyone together and brings awareness to every race that experiences it."
Uh, my comment is, I just feel like, since the flag's been raised, that it's put our school into more of a divide than it was before we raised that flag. That's all it says.
Did you wanna make a comment? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Tim Fraser. Tim Fraser. My wife, Jen, I'm sorry. I get too worked up. I think it's, this is my belief and that's fine. I believe kids don't make the decisions, they don't pay the taxes, and they're not 18. So I don't understand how you could make a decision on this when it didn't go out to people that pay taxes in the school. Um, as a business owner, I go to a lot of places and the veterans are disgusted. Um, I hear lots and lots of stuff. If you wanna put the, any flag you want on a million poles out there, then so be it. But we all, everybody fights to be here or whatever it is. And nothing should've been on the American flag pole. And it disgusts me. If my father was here after fighting and everything, he'd be disgusted. Now my wife would like to talk, please.
Let me say, I'm Fraser. The only way that I could explain how this flag has affected my family is by giving you a timeline of events. So, bear with me, please. Um, it's gonna start with the week of May 22nd. Um, my son was in a full class discussion on raising the BLM flag at the school. Um, when my child voiced his concerns about why he felt the flag should not be raised, his teacher kicked him out of the classroom for not having the same beliefs as her. He did not, um, we did not find out about this incident until we received an email from the school and the school board on the 28th stating when the flag was going to be raised. We asked our son if he knew about it, and that's when he explained to us that he had been kicked out of class. So, May 29th, Tim and I went to Washington Central Supervisory Union to meet or to schedule a meeting with Bill Kimball so that we could discuss our concerns with the BLM flag and the lack of support that our child received at school. We were told that they could not help us, that we had to go to the school and talk to the principals. Um, so we went over to the school and asked if we could be seen. And Jody did sit down with us. And later in our conversation, Stephen joined in. We voiced our concerns about raising the flag with them and how our son had been kicked out of class. And we were told that that teacher had been spoken to about it. Um, to our knowledge, she was not asked to apologize to our son and to her class for her behavior. She should've remained neutral that day instead of allowing her feelings and her beliefs to control her. And my son was publicly shamed for his thoughts and feelings. Um, they assured us that our child would be safe on the flag-raising day and every day. So we jumped to June 1st. My son is sitting at a table in the cafeteria with his friends, listening to music from someone at the table's playlist on, through a portable Bluetooth speaker. My son was video recorded without his knowledge or consent singing in the song, playing with the N-word in it. Um, and other not-so-nice words. Um, the person then proceeds to send this video through Snapchat to multiple people in the school. Um, I'm gonna call this next person Student A. It's one of the students that was shown this video and goes to the cafeteria and proceeds to yell at my son, calling him a redneck, ignorant, white, and white trash. Leaves, comes back 20-ish minutes later to continue to yell, harass, and verbally, excuse me, attack my son before going to the principal's office. My son is brought in to see Jody and receives a harassment charge on his school record and gets a two-day out-of-school suspension effective immediately. When we found out about this, we asked to talk to Jody and scheduled the time to meet on, because it was in the evening, on Monday morning, June 4th. So, June 4th, we meet with Jody. She explained the incident to us and what was on the video. We talked about how our child was now being harassed, bullied, and stereotyped because of someone else's behavior or actions. She told us that the student that took and sent the video had been reprimanded. She couldn't tell us what, you know, what it was, and we completely understand. We asked her if Student A was disciplined for harassing and bullying our son. And we were told that they had to look at the video again to see what actions needed to be taken. We again talked about the safety of our son and were told that he would be safe. We told Jody that we were going to tell our son to see her if he had any problems at school when he went back the next day because he was out of school on suspension. So, June 5th, our son didn't want to go to school because he didn't feel safe. We stressed the importance of him finishing out his school year, to hold his head up high and to keep his mouth closed and not to ruin his chances on going to the tech center at Spalding next year. He agreed to go. And we told him, if anything was said to him that made him feel unsafe to go see Jody. Well, something happened and he did not go to Jody. Instead, he tells me after school that Student A walked up to him first period while he was sitting at a table again with his friends, minding his own business, and tried to start a fight with him, yelling at him, "Do you wanna start shit again?" And again, my son asked her to go away. When she continued to yell at him, the other students at the table told her to go away. So, Student A claims that she founded the multicultural group BLM in a, her quote, "in an effort to stimulate a conversation about racism and intolerance." And states, "This flag to me represents equality, inclusiveness, and most of all, hope. Hope that in the future, not just this school, but the nation will learn the beauty of differences and the importance of change." And that the racism needs to stop, the police brutality needs to stop, the stereotyping needs to stop, and most of all, the oppression needs to come to an end. So, in her theory, the flag equals equality, inclusiveness, and hope. And she feels that by raising this flag, racism, stereotyping, and oppression will stop. Everything she says BLM and BLM flag stands for is the opposite of her actions. She is showing herself as superior, verbally attacking, harassing, bullying my son all because she was not reprimanded or punished for her actions back on June 1st. And to my knowledge, has not been at all. Um, the school told us they would keep my child safe through all of this and have repeatedly failed. How do you tell your child that he is safe at school and that the school supports him and his views when they are not treating him as an equal to his peers? All because of a flag that was supposed to help with just that, equality, inclusiveness, and hope. I agree that the issues this flag has raised are bigger than all of us. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I feel that something that is as important as this should've been put to a ballot or invoked for the community, not the school board to decide. This BLM group said that they did not feel the support of our whole community. Then the whole community should've been given that chance. Thank you.
So, I do have a comment. I just, you know, I, I hear the same thing coming from Isabella when she's in class and there's a discussion about the Black Lives Matter flag or any kind of, uh, you know, going along with that. And she, Isabella gets bombarded by all the other students. Um, and I haven't heard this once, I've heard this twice, I've heard this multiple times. These kids, they cannot go ahead and speak their mind and how they feel without feeling, without getting repercussions from these other students because, and, okay? No, that's fine. And, you know, uh, you know, for what they believe. It seems like, you know, if they don't believe the way the majority does, they're the outcasts. You know, and, and I keep hearing about that. And, and it's tough, you know, I, myself, I don't understand why the Black Lives Matter, you know, flag got raised like that. You know, I, I didn't know that, um, schools were able to go ahead and support an activist group like that. An activist group, you know, that'll go ahead and, uh, you know, chant down the road, "Pigs in a blanket, frying like bacon." Um, go ahead and block interstates. And when police come to go ahead and try to get them off the interstates, they go ahead and throw rocks and bottles and other objects at the police. I mean, they're, I, I'm not saying they're all like that, but this has all happened, you know, because of this Black Lives Matter protest. And I just had no idea that schools are able to go ahead and, or are allowed to go ahead and fly something like that in support of a protest group. Um, and, you know, from, from what I understand, you know, from what I hear from the kids and, you know, from you guys too, it's creating a huge divide in the school, you know? And it shouldn't be like that. And I remember when I was in high school, I mean, that was the last thing, you know, we ever talked about or even thought about with things like that. We're all like, you know, hanging out, going to school, doing our thing, you know? And, I mean, just the issues that come up in schools nowadays, I just don't get it. I mean, the kids should be able to, you know, be able to come to school and have fun and be able to go and speak their minds about certain things without having any kind of backlash. You know? I, I, I just, I don't understand. And, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from. Nothing else should be going up on that flag pole. The only thing that I would see that should be going up on that flag pole is POW M.I.A. flag. You know, um, I just, it, it's, it's tough. And, you know, and, and there's a lot of other, you know, if you don't mind me saying, there's a lot of other students that feel the same way that these three of you are here. But some couldn't come for other reasons, family reasons, but some didn't come. They, they said they wanted to, but when the time came, they were scared to. Because, they're scared to because they're afraid of backlash and people labeling them as racist. You know? Um, bigots, you know? And, and, and that's why the other students did not attend today. Because they don't wanna get targeted, you know? And I, I, I wanna applaud you three for coming in, you know? And, you know, showing how you feel and speaking your mind about this and not worrying about what other people have to say. I mean, that's, that's, that's great. I mean, that's.
It's definitely scary.
Yeah.
Um, some of my friends, they, they agree with what we're doing and they wanna be here, but they don't feel like they can because they don't want, they're afraid of being labeled as racist. And like you said, it's, they're afraid of backlash and their peers like shunning them.
Yeah, like, and there was one, there was one point, I remember, there was a scenario this year at school. I was voice, I was talking with another student about this political opinion. And they were like, "Why, why do you believe that?" And they went to a teacher. And I was like, "Don't go to a teacher, don't go to a teacher," like, in, like, being scared, like, "Oh, like, they're gonna think that I'm a racist now because I just said that." Like, "Oh no, I can't think that now." And I, I was, I was, I remember that feeling. I was like, "No, don't ask the teacher, don't ask the teacher." That was, like, I said, yeah, 'cause I, yeah, I remember, I made a point. And then they were like, "That's completely racist" and stuff. And they, they went, they were gonna go to a teacher. But I remember that feeling, like, "Oh no." Like, I had that teacher, and that teacher was gonna like, could possibly like, have like a, like, what's the word? Like, uh, could have like a, could say like, "Oh, that kid thinks this, and I'm not gonna treat him the same as other kids." Like, that's, like, I had that feeling, like, I was scared. And I feel like a lot of other students at our school feel that. And, yeah, I guess that's why we're here, just to tell you guys that.
I, I couldn't get data, and I will if, if it's forced to, but I actually went around last week instead of working. And I took it upon myself in a friendly manner to as many people as I could walk up to and, and get their opinion just to educate myself. Um, and I was blown away. So I went up to as many black people as I could. And every single one said they were disgusted. And maybe it's a coincidence, maybe I just went on the wrong side of the tracks that day, I don't know. But they all were working-class people, they had family and kids. Most of them, to be honest, 'cause they were young, they were just getting in school. Um, I think one or two did not have kids. But, uh, they all worked. 'Cause that was one of the questions I had, "Do you, do you work? Do you, you know, this and that?" And they were all against it. And they said that it was gonna start a war.
Um, you know, Isabella's a woman at home, and I really appreciate that. She definitely keeps us in the loop, even sometimes when she doesn't want to. You know? But, but she does. Um, there, uh, she came home the other night and she was telling me about a student that ended up telling her, you know, that, um, white people don't know what we feel like. They don't, they, they don't, um, they don't, they don't experience racism. And, and that, that blew my mind, you know? Myself, I grew up in Southern California, I was born in Los Angeles, then, you know, raised in Los Angeles and in San Diego, to where I was minority, you know? Like myself, I've never experienced an area where I was surrounded by mostly Caucasians. I was always a minority. And myself, I, I was picked on because of the color of my skin. You know, I was picked on, you know, because I was white. Um, you know, I, I've been jumped because of the color of my skin, called you effin' white boy, you know? Um, you know, making fun of how white my legs are, you know? So, I mean, there, there's, it, it's not just the white, it's not just Caucasians, man, they're, they're racist. I mean, there's racism in everybody. Um, it, it, but it just, that just tells me, you know, that, you know, a lot of people, you know, they, they don't believe that, you know, whites or other, you know, races, you know, deal with that racial tension. But we actually do. I don't know if you guys ever felt racial tension towards you. I, I have, and it sucks. And, and I totally understand, you know, where, where people are coming from with it. But it's not just one race that's feeling it. You know, and that's where these kids come up with a good point, you know, All Lives Matter. And, and it really does, you know? Instead of dividing, you know, with just one political, not political group, but, you know, just one group, you know, why not unite? Everybody unite, you know, so you can be stronger, you know? Come together and work things out. I mean, that, I know, that's, sounds like more of like a perfect world, you know? And it almost seems like, you know, it's out of reach, man. But, you never know, 20, 30, 40 years from now, we could get to that point. You know, why not start now? Why not try to get started now? Everybody unite.
I just wanna make one more last point. And there's, like, there was a counter, we had a counter, there was a counter protest out there. And one of the students was holding up an All Lives Matter sign. And when he went back out in middle school, he was told that he can't have that sign because he was white and black.
I heard that as well.
Yep.
That people from that group said that they couldn't believe that he even made it out there because he was so fat.
Yes, and I was also told that from a BLM member that I can't join the BLM group because I was white.
Because you're white.
Yep, and, um, and yeah, that's, that's, I feel that's the last point.
I thought that's what many, many more was. What are we?
Yep.
This is just the beginning. And before any of this happened, like I said, my kids, my kid is definitely not a perfect child. Try hard as. Um, but you can, I admire my words, that you can take my child out of this whole equation and take all the other kids. This is just the beginning. This is icing on the cake here. This is not Montpelier School. There's way too many different people in this community. And I can only hope for the safety of everybody. It's, there's a lot of pissed-off people. Thank you.
I have a comment. Uh, my name is Jennifer Micah. I'm a resident of East Montpelier, and I also serve at U32 on occasion. Um, and I wanted to say, first I wanna say you guys are really brave for coming here. I know that it's really, really hard. And I would agree, um, I have supported the Black Lives Matter flag. And, um, I'm generally a liberal person. Uh, but I will say this, that, uh, I think that teachers here at U32 are not well, um, educated on how to handle these really difficult discussions. My kids come home with similar comments to what you're hearing here today. And my kids are pretty liberal. And they come in and they say, "These kids were trying to have a conversation in class and everybody came and jumped on them." And said, "How, you're acting just like, you know, the people you criticize are acting." And so I mean that this goes to the need, when you talk about the issue of having a diversity policy. I think before you have any kind of policy, you need to think about putting some money into educating teachers, giving them the skills that they need so they can handle these conversations. A lot of teachers don't know how to hold students safely in such a heated argument. 'Cause that's what it be, it becomes an argument. There's huge discussions going on about patriotism, about the lives of black people in America, about the history of racism, about the reverse racism. All of that is going on right now. And, um, we're asking teachers to go into these classrooms where there are these emotions. And with, with, um, you know, the, the president that we have, whether you like him or you don't, I think it's undisputed that it's created a lot of problems in our society. The difference of opinion about the policies that are, um, being enacted. And it's starting with Obama, really, because people weren't happy with Obama. So, we have this long period of time when people are really angry. And I really hope that, instead of spending your time on creating a policy right now, really think about whether you can find money so that you can help the teachers, so you can hold the teachers so that they can in turn hold their classrooms safely so that people can in fact be heard. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paula, for coming. It's really important for us to hear all sides of issues and to hear from a diverse group of people. We only know what we hear and comes here, and I really appreciate you. It does take a lot of courage. Um, and I appreciate it, especially the students to come. So thank you very much. And know that we're working really hard on this issue. And we want everyone to feel safe. And we want everyone to understand and be educated about how to handle difficult situations and how to treat everybody so they feel respected and equal. And we're working really hard on that. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
So, so classrooms to me, from what I remember, just, this is like.
You know what, I'm gonna, we've done a half an hour of public comment.
Yeah, it's not about political discussion in classrooms.
So, um, I'm just, I'm gonna stop it there just 'cause we have a full agenda. And we've already been sitting in meetings for two and a half hours. Okay? Thank you. So the consent agenda, the approve the minutes of, um, May 23rd, is there a motion to do that?
Soon.
God, in a second? Carl, any comments or changes? You okay?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Discussion agenda, board retreat. So we didn't, I heard Matthew say tonight, he actually wanted us to adopt those three goals tonight.
Right, I think that would be part of this.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It's not actually on here, but I think we could.
Can we add that?
Yeah, I think we can add that. Um, so the, the idea was that after the retreat in August that the, um, full board has, that the U32 board could meet even that same day and work on more goals if we needed more goals or decide that we only have to meet those three. And I kinda have these feelings about sitting through a meeting all day and then doing meeting, meeting, meeting personally.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I was trying to be open to what he said. Um, I think that we're in agreement on those three goals. We've talked about it.
They're really well-defined, too.
And they're well-defined. Um, and I don't know whether people have other goals that we wanna discuss and knock around or not. And whether we need to wait until August 2nd to do that or whether we could say that we have those three goals and we wanna meet as a board to see if we have other goals. I'm just, it's all in those ideas.
I would suggest that we have a fourth goal probably in, in this diversity and equity matter. I don't know, I'm not sure exactly what that goal is, but I think we're gonna be spending a fair amount of time focused on that.
And so do we need a retreat in order to have a conversation and flesh that out better? And kinda flesh out the work plan for the year?
I don't, I think, I don't know. Especially because I can't make time, I was saying.
Well, I, I have a hard time thinking that I'm gonna sit from you.
Yeah.
Eight to four a.m.
It'd not be a healthy, uh, cycle.
Was I crazy?
Was there anything different?
Okay, so, and we wanna, and we wanna date for our board retreat when everyone can be there. 'Cause that's really important.
Is there any reason we can't adopt these three goals? Add a fourth goal?
No, absolutely not, yeah. Thank you. And I guess, but I, and I guess my question is, Carl, do we want a board retreat in order to flesh out a fourth goal?
If, if there's a way not to have another retreat, I would vote for that. Or at least we'd at least explore.
So, so what if Tuhari and I try to figure out a goal? That we can present to, and we're not actually not meeting again until August.
Is it legitimate to do as like a Google Doc that we could share?
Right, I mean, no.
That would be a meeting.
Is the answer for that?
Actually, those rules, but not that far.
Carl, um, Kari and I could come up with a goal. We can work, two of us can work on it together. And then at our next board meeting, present it as the fourth goal for discussion, and if we agree to do it, we can just add it.
And when is our next meeting? Is it early August?
Well, we haven't decided. We can decide that. It, sometimes
You decide that.
Yeah, sometimes it's the first week, the first Wednesday in August, and sometimes we wait till the third Wednesday in August.
Okay.
And I don't think
About, about two months from now.
Yeah, yep. And I don't think it really matters whether, you know, whether we do the goal the first week or the third week in August. It has made sense to do it closer to the start of school. Right?
Yeah, and we're, we're
Ninety percent of Vermonters leave
Yeah.
the first two weeks of August. Go to Maine. They all go to Maine.
So, I'm hearing that we could develop a goal, we could present it at a board meeting as a discussion item and we could put it on the action agenda also. If we weren't ready to vote on it, we didn't, and if we were, we could.
Sure.
Does that sound like a plan?
I think so.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna put on the action agenda to adopt the three, um, excuse me, full board goals. Can we do that without it being?
Um, you and me too, as a board, actually amend your agenda. And it's, but since it's an action item, it's supposed to be worn, and I think that
So, why don't we just wait and do all four of them together? It doesn't make any difference.
Sure, yeah.
Let's do it right.
I don't think Matthew will be too disappointed with us.
No. I know, we, well, we didn't get on our action agenda, okay.
He would have a whole meeting to hold.
That's right.
Okay.
Before we go to the next topic, I, I just wanted to relay there have been about three or four different public comments that came in via email. And I feel like you should at least say what they are. And do you wanna do that now or do you wanna do it later?
Are they, are they to a particular topic? Are they to the diversity?
Well, there was Ben, Ben Hines's, uh, letter today was about
Oh, I haven't, I didn't, I haven't read that.
That came today.
When did it come?
It came later this afternoon.
Okay, so I haven't even seen that one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, and that's, that's speaks to the, what we're just about to talk about. Um, Jennifer actually, and I, I guess I just received this, or you didn't send this to the board, but, um, there was a question about, um, cellphone use policy and, and, uh, request.
I know about that.
If there's not, I don't, I'm not aware of a cellphone policy.
Is there a procedure for cellphones?
There's, the handbook, um, outlines some of the cellphone. There's not a, and Jennifer can probably speak even more specifically, cellphone policy in the handbook.
Uh, it's up to individual teachers.
Yeah, is how it's written into the handbook, is that individual teacher.
Unless it's middle school.
In middle school, we, we don't allow cellphones during the day or at lunch. You know, those kinds of times.
And do you have a sense of, of that, that's been problematic in classrooms?
Um, well, and i- if we say that, do students always follow the rules of their classroom? And I know, you, you know, the teachers, the teachers have to report to us if there's a problem with it in their classroom. It's not something that we, we seek out. Um, and from time to time, there is an issue.
I have sought out middle school phones during lunch, though.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get a pile.
Yeah, so, you know, we prefer, and we tell them that we prefer that they speak to each other, and actually, our incidents of bullying and harassment in the middle school went down considerably when we would don't allow them to have their cellphones during lunch. Um, because they don't have that time to actually Snapchat each other and do all those things that amp up the, uh, the discussion.
Is that a new?
No, it's been around.
Procedure, whatever you would call it.
I, it's three or four years old.
Okay.
It wasn't around when I was in middle school.
Then it's three years old.
May I speak to it? No.
I didn't hear what she said.
It was Jennifer's comment.
May I speak to it? May I speak to the, the point?
About cellphones?
Cellphones, what I was looking for.
Did, did, did this letter go to Stephen?
I, I've not received.
Jennifer sent me a comment.
Sent a comment.
Well, a question, really.
I, I asked, I just asked if there was any, before I raised it as an issue, I sent it to Kari to ask if there were discussions about cellphone policy.
We have, we do not have a cellphone policy. We have not discussed it, and my gut reaction is that it's more a rule than a board policy.
Yeah.
That's my gut, um.
I would say that's how administration is viewed, is that it's not a policy decision, but a, a school rule and procedure.
But it could be a policy decision if somebody, if you decided to make it that. There's nothing preventing it.
I have to say, as an elected official, I don't really see it as my role to tell somebody what to do with their phone. I do see it as a staff, you know, the administration, a staff at school needing to establish a rule to manage phones if there are problems in school.
Our guiding
I don't see it as a policy level decision.
Our guiding principle is kinda to look at the mission and the policies, and as a board, to keep our discussions on that level.
Right, but, I mean, that's, that's throughout the whole nation, right? That's what most school boards do.
It's what they're supposed to do.
Right, but there are lots of schools that in fact have implemented cellphone policies. So, I don't think that it is beyond the scope of what you could do. But, I'm just gonna rate, that's as far as I, I need to go on it, but I think that it is cellphones are, I think, are a problem at U32.
Yeah, they may be. I think, I think we're of the mind that, that that's a staff level.
And if you
We haven't really talked about it.
If you have a problem with cellphones, I would suggest you talk to the administration first. Okay, and see where you get with the administration, because that is definitely their jurisdiction as opposed to ours. Okay?
Um, so really quickly, there was an email today from Dawn McConnell to all of us about, this is definitely a staff level about, um, her daughter being denied lunch, um, because of her balance or something like that. I, I just wanna say it came to us, but I, um, I, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to respond or
I, I, I got the email as well, but I haven't been able to, I, I, I got it later in the day, so I have not been able to, to
Yeah, okay, we'll follow on that.
If the emails, if the emails go to Stephen, I don't feel like we have to respond. I feel like it's information.
If it's clearly a staff level.
It's an information thing.
Good.
I usually check in with him.
Yeah, I just, we, we haven't had an opportunity to, to, and check it out yet, but we, we did, we did receive it.
And then the last one is, uh, Michelle McFadden asked me
You have a great coffee.
And, uh, asked me to follow up on the science request and uh, I explained to her what we discussed last time, that the chemistry classes are full uh, and that the solution that's being developed is a, is a new science class with sort of applied principles with some additional rigor. Um, and Michelle seemed to think that it may tend to a vote and what, the way I responded was, we don't view this as a, as a board level decision or I don't think we intend to vote, so, good.
Thank you, thanks. How long do you guys wanna stay? Do you wanna do your report first?
I think I can stay till the end.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. I have, I'm not competing with Kari, of course, but there are a couple of
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. That's quite all right, excuse me, please.
Well, I don't know. We need to hear all individual.
I don't know.
I'm not
This is, this is kinda new. Have we always shared kind of individual boards? If it doesn't go to the whole board?
Not always, it depends.
It depends on the subject, maybe, and what it's appropriate to do. But I've certainly, on the DODI board, often gotten a phone call that was clearly meant to be shared with the rest of the board, and I do so when that happens.
So, do you think this one's meant to be shared with the rest of the board?
I think so. Um, it was from Safety Gardner Morse in Callas. And she's concerned, she tutors a number of, um, students, including, um, some special ed students here. Uh, including among them, at least one senior. And she's concerned that the, um, the support that they're getting, particularly towards the end of the year, is not, um, is not as much as it needs to be over particularly for the senior to complete all the work necessary for
She reached out to Kelly Bushy, maybe today or yesterday, and Kelly has tried to get back to her and they haven't connected.
Okay.
So, Kelly is responding to her. I'm really just telling you that this evening.
Excellent.
And, and just as a point of clarification, if the board, any board member receives a request like that, we, if, if we're not aware of that, do you, it would, and I'm asking this kind of as a point of, uh, is the board feel like they should or could, uh, forward that to us?
I have, I have always done that. I always send
So, I would just say that some of these, like, I, I don't know if these issues, and there's nothing I can do if I don't know.
No, of course, and if I could forward phone calls, I would do so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you said it was an email.
I am sorry, I did, I thought
It was a phone call, um, just this afternoon or something.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. So, you guys wanna stay through this diversity discussion, or do you wanna do your report first?
Stay. Yeah.
Okay, do you wanna do your report just in case it goes too long, or?
Well, because one of the things on our report is a good, like, pre-diversity discussion thing, I guess. You don't
Sure. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, sure.
And then if you meet, sometimes these go, and it's already late, so I'm just trying to respect your time.
Okay, um, so we have some, like, less important things to talk about, but our most important thing is, um, sort of, there's just been a lot of discussion about the Black Lives Matter flag at our school. Last week, we had, um, a bunch of facilitated callbacks with members of BLM about, like, racism in our school, what the flag meant to them, and, um, they were pretty well attended and I think sort of BLM had the idea to get this flag up as like a conversation starter, and I think that's really been working because we've had a lot of, like, important conversations, um, but Well, there was, I mean, it kinda goes both ways, because there's been a lot of important conversations about race, but there's also a lot of people who feel like the, like, when, talking about the flag as, you know, as a part of this conversation about, you know, diversity, that maybe the decision was made before everyone could weigh in. So, for, some of the things last week, like, we're really productive and really good. Uh, but when talking about the flag, a lot of people felt like, like, why are we talking about it if it's happening and we can't do anything about it? You know, like, it's sort of, the discussions, at least within the school, have happened mostly after, um, it had already been decided to raise the flag. Uh, so there's concern around that. And I also think that, um, sort of, I know we're not really supposed to, like, talk about the public comment, but I was gonna share this anyway, which is that a lot of kids against the flag feel like they can't share their opinions, like, sometimes they are, but I was in a class a couple of days ago and we were talking about the flag, and one kid said, he said, I don't feel okay sharing my opinion because everybody's just gonna shut me down, so like, it's, it's a very polarizing issue, um, among the student body, I guess. And then I'm like a less heavy note. We have some other things.
So, um, thank you very much for sharing that. I know it's not easy, and it, it's just really important for us to get as much as we can, as much information.
So, I'll later.
Okay.
The boys track team won the championships. They surprised, I feel like they've won six times in a row.
With enthusiasm.
Um, and then both the boys and girls cross team are going to the championships on Friday and Saturday. So, they've been making announcements. They really want everybody there.
Which one's Friday?
The girls? The boys.
Harwood's graduating Saturday. I wondered about that.
Oh, no. Um, and then also on Friday, on Friday, we have, um, spring day, which is pretty exciting. It's getting a boost this year, I guess you could say. So, it's basically like the high school version of field day. So, it's at the end of the day and we're all gonna go outside and like, play all these games. We got some bouncy stuff going on. Games and ice creams. No, there's like, it's a whole jousting.
So, are you taking us to our school on Friday morning to your school? That's what we're doing Friday morning.
Oh, really?
And ice cream in the afternoon.
Ice cream and bouncy stuff.
Yeah, and then Yeah, and, um, so my last day of school is Friday. Um, and then we're doing this, I mean, in the senior week, award ceremony Sunday, SCOP Monday, Unity Day Tuesday, and then senior trip and then graduation. So, it's, you know Oh, senior community outreach project, right? Yes. Right, and so, all the seniors, like they do every year, are going, um, out into the community to help people to, you know, sort of give back before graduation, organized by student council, of course. Of course. That's kind of our report, though.
Thank you very much.
Where's the senior trip this year?
We're going to, let's see, we're going to New York, because we're gonna go to the Great Escape, and we'll stay overnight and go White Water Rock the next day.
It's getting bigger and bigger. So, just
Our eighth grade is in DC right now. Oh, yeah.
And just a note, Shannon, you can spread this.
Okay.
Seniors need to behave on that trip.
Yes.
Because we do not want any seniors in here at five o'clock on the day of graduation pleading to graduate because they've done something that they should Yes. Yes, it, it really has, and it is
We save five o'clock every year.
And it's, it's really heart wrenching, and I, I'm, you know, I'm saying it in jest, but I'm really serious that
Yeah.
You know, kids just need to behave themselves.
Yes.
Have a great time, but just follow the rules.
That's the beginning of my speech when we do our graduation rehearsal. First day before they head off to do all of that.
And you know, you can, came from me, and we, we sit here and, we sit here and, but we sit here and agonize whether kids can walk in graduation because of something stupid, literally stupid, that they have done on a school trip.
Right.
And it, you know, because it's right before graduation, it
Or this is walking or
Yeah, yep. So, anyway.
The good news is that we haven't had to have that meeting the last two either.
I know, that's, that's great.
So, we wanna keep our record going.
Right.
Um, and the other thing, I wanna really thank you, Shannon, for participating in the school board and being here. It's really important for us to hear your voice and and we will miss you, but I'm sure there's somebody in the pipeline.
You may have actually seen one of them.
Did you do a presentation the other day? You guys all set? Okay, thanks. So, diversity, inclusion and equity belief statements. So, last week, two weeks ago, maybe it was two weeks ago, Kari and Scott drafted a proposed statement that we looked at. We had a few tweaks to it. So, they, so they have, we have an updated version with not very many changes.
Not that much.
Yeah, I kinda underlined, there are a couple of words added and a couple of things. Um, and the hope is today that we can adopt this as a statement of beliefs for the school board. Um, and from it will come lots of education, lots of training, lots of discussions, so that every kid feels safe, feels included, feels welcomed in this school, and understands how other people feel and how their actions impact other people. And that's a huge education piece that our country has not figured out yet. And we're just one little island here trying to help our students here. And I don't know if you wanna add anymore?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure where to start this conversation. It's already started, right? It's been going on for weeks, but, um, I guess when, you know, one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight was, what was our intent in making this decision? And that's what this is about, right? This is, we're trying to explain our intent. These are our values. This is where we're coming from. Um, and we, we can next get into what didn't we know, what didn't we anticipate, what was our decision-making process? These are legitimate criticisms of how our board is, is acting, or at least worthy of discussion. But on this, I feel more But on this, I feel more confident, more solid, like this is, these are our beliefs and, um, we seem to be pretty well aligned.
I'd like to sort of mimic that and say, I was, I was in my kitchen last night reading my email or something and I, I was sort of looking at the policy, thinking about the flag and stuff this weekend. I just said out loud to my wife across the kitchen space, I said something about, you know, we kind of stumbled into it, but this, 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 uh, this belief statement really to me strikes me as the strongest core of all this. This is really where we're codifying our beliefs and making it a piece of the school community. And to, and I, I was just talking out of my way in the kitchen, I said, this really may be more important than putting up the flag. I feel like this is more important than putting up the flag, it's codifying this direction for the community. And immediately from upstairs, a not spoken teenager cried out, blah, 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 how can you say that this is more important, what you're doing is more important than the flag and blah, blah, blah. And it took 25 minutes of conversation in my kitchen to rein that situation in and have everybody understand. I was like, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I wasn't saying that we were more important than this flag and blah, 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 blah. I was like, and yeah, it is a touchy, it's a really touchy subject. And I do, I think that this, that this belief statement is, I think we've sort of stumbled into, however it really lands, somehow codifying the importance of inclusion and equity within the school is, is, the real core of what we're doing here.
And I think it says that all lives matter. You know, I think that's the bottom line of this is that all lives matter.
The first three bullets are all, start with all.
That's offensive. That's offensive to raise a Black Lives Matter flag and then say all lives matter. That's the whole point of the Black Lives Matter flag. If you have a burning house, that's the house that matters. All houses matter, but the burning one is the one that needs your attention. And when you start saying all lives matter, that is code. And if you don't realize that, then all this diversity stuff you're doing is for naught.
And I would answer that's why the flag is flying.
Absolutely. Because we realized that there was a section of our population that wasn't feeling this way.
We recognize that burning house.
But you just said all lives matter, as if Black Lives Matter, but all lives matter. And, and that, that is the crux of the whole issue.
And that's the same conversation I had in my kitchen last minute.
This is, um, what's both great and slightly terrifying about all this is how much energy is getting released out of this, um, out of this sequence of events and discussions. And, um, I, for me, what, uh, the connection is that it's only possible for all lives to matter if, as a, as a condition, Black Lives Matter, since those are the lives that have had the roughest for the past 400 years. And the, just sort of, it's not words, it's actions that, that ultimately matter. Um, all actions matter. The, the difficulty, and what I think is, what's really good about the belief statement is that it does provide a framework, I hope, for the administration to be able to contain all that energy that's being released. I mean, how are, um, how are you feeling about how this is going? Do you feel like you've kind of had it or is it every now and then slipping out of your?
So, um, so you've asked, um, it was a rushed decision for our administration to be able to handle, we're exhausted. So the one conversation that, um, that Carl had with his child is multiplied by the number of kids that are in the building. Um, I, and faculty. And, um, and so if we, if we rewind into some of, uh, in some of the things that we need to do as a school, um, you know, I have to point Jennifer is exactly right. Um, our teachers aren't well-equipped to have these kinds of discussions. Um, that's cultural, that's, um, because we're in central Vermont. Um, there are a lot of things that, um, our staff has not experienced, um, that they need to be trained on. The good points, right? We have a foundation of advisory, we have a foundation of restorative practice. Um, we now have, um, a board who is aware that this is something that is, um, at the policy level almost in terms of importance of, of what we do. Um, and, and now there's a higher level of accountability for what we do as a school. Um, we have so many layers of this. You heard the first layer is just the raw emotion that we face around this from students who feel, um, that these hallways were not safe for them because of the color of their skin. Um, you've heard that, you've heard that we have other students who don't understand because the, the, the issue of race is also taken up by the issue of class. It's taken up by the issue of gender. And, and all of these things intersect in ways that are unique for each and every individual within our building. And so for us as a school, we have to learn how to have those conversations around each one of those areas and, and how to support the student who finds themselves in all three categories. To find the student who finds themselves in one category and can't understand why someone in another category might be, um, might be shown a different, um, approach to, to solving their problems. And so, I mean, I wish, I wish I could say that there's an answer to this, but we've, we've opened up the door appropriately to the discussions. We are not good at the discussions. We are, we are two months into it, um, and we are learning from our mistakes. We're, we're learning from the students. And, um, I would just point out too is that we don't need to contain it. This isn't a containment issue. And I know that you're not choosing your words, but it's not a containment issue. This is an empowerment issue. And we started with the group of students who, um, who feel the least, um, supported within our community. And if we go by the, the idea that when we build those students up and when we provide them with a safe space, that we begin to create a safe space for other students as a result. And, and when we acknowledge that we have racism and that we have cultural, um, incompetency within our students and bias within our programs, the students are right. We don't read enough books from authors that are not white male. Right? We are not using examples of African-American, uh, scientists when we talk about, you know, what's going on in our world. These are all things that will take time, um, to build a curriculum, to build an instructional base and to build, um, a common culture that lifts all of our kids up. And by putting up the Black Lives Matter flag, we, we've said that we recognize that this is an issue and that this is something that we have to deal with. And we have to deal with now. Like it's not, it's not something that we can put off. It's not something that we can say that we'll get to. And it's not something that we can say that we want to dilute by trying to include all lives matter or all issues at one time. We have to, you know, we, we have a, a capacity to deal with things that's limited. And, and right now, we're, we're at capacity and the discussions are going to continue. But we're, we're just not good at it yet. Like this is, and this is, this is what education is about, right? We started a level of not being very good at something and we grow towards being good at it. And unfortunately, you know, we have to deal with it from the not good standpoint right now of being able to deal with this.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Provision. We're not provisioned.
Well, I really appreciate that, that was, that was well said.
And I want to say that I know I feel bad and I suspect we all do to some degree with the rapidity at which the administration and staff have been called on to step up to this in this particular circumstance. At the same time, it needs to be dealt with sooner than later. It's not something we can wait to do. The conversation just needs to start. And, and I, and, and I think it would be nice, I would say, I think it would be nice if you could convey to the administration and administrative staff and teaching staff and everybody that we, the board appreciate the trouble that they're up against, how hard it is. The difficulties, the roughness that it seems with which this has come up.
Just out of curiosity, does this group or some configuration of, of this group have a faculty advisor or? The two of you?
We're generally the two people that this group of students has sought out to hold their discussions with. And we've sat in on some of the discussions that were part of the, the discussions that happened during callback last week. We, we were with some of these students to, to be supportive of them and their attempts to understand what's going on.
And what about the Krista and was it Adrian who worked here? Are they faculty advisors?
Uh, Krista is the faculty advisor to the BLM students.
Okay. Is that kind of what you meant to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and she was at, she was, she's been at at least two or three of the meetings with the students.
I mean, our, we're planning for, you know, this is the time where we begin to plan for next year. Um, you know, it's, as soon as we graduate kids, the next day we turn around and we start looking at what we're going to do in August when, uh, teachers arrive and, um, and how do we, you know, our trainings around restorative practice for our new faculty, our trainings that we're going to do in our opening in-service, what are we going to do throughout our Wednesdays next year? This is one of the, you know, building a culturally competent, uh, staff is part of that plan now. You know, I mean, it's, it's got to be a part of it.
Some of the students that were not here that we're kind of talked about came last week and they wanted to start a, a group and basically they want an anti-bullying. They, they're like, we don't want it to be any specific group of kids, we just want anti-bullying. And great, start it. So, so it's partly, it's also getting the message out that we're going to, we support you to do the things that are good, that are going to help the community.
Yeah, that's, that's great because a lot of times, um, some of the, I mean, when you mentioned class before student, classism is, it is another big issue that doesn't really get much dealt with. But, um, there are, there are certain families, affinity groups that just withdraw from political action, political activism, which is a loss to all of us. And it's much better if, you know, they're, they're engaged and, you know, they develop the skills to, um, to have a kind of constructive debate and be, and participation.
And I would question, they don't necessarily pull back. I mean, when we talk about issues of class and race, and I'm not trying to challenge Scott, but I do have to challenge our thinking along this. Is that these aren't families that necessarily pull back because they don't want to be involved. These are families that are working two and three jobs, don't have childcare and don't have a solid place to live or they have food insecurities. This is not their venue. When, when all of those things exist, this is not what's important, right? What's important is whether or not their child is getting fed. What is important is whether or not they're able to pay their rent. And so, so we, you know, we have to be careful not to discount the inaction of, of, of a family simply because of, um, they're not here, right? Because they may not be capable of being here. Right now, we're also focused on, are they welcome here, right? And that's the, that's the issue, I think, that's first and foremost right now, is that we have to make sure that people are welcome to, to be in our school and, and that they feel that they have value. And that's the, that's the work that we have to do.
Could I just add something too that, that, uh, just reflecting on all of this, you know, what's, what's really, to me, so incredibly discouraging about nationally what's happening and what comes out of the mouths of our leaders? It almost provides license for people to be increasingly more uncivil and indecent and awful. And I think that spreads and is spreading unfortunately around the country and I think it's spreading here too to some degree. I mean, kids are kids, kids are always going to pick on each other. One does not not happen, right? I mean, that's, so that's a given. But, but it's changing a little bit now, I just, the sense that I have, just looking, I mean, you know, we can name the examples of, of leaders at many levels of government, um, that it's almost free license to just be awful. And then you combine social media and the ease with which people can throw darts at each other. With us, we don't allow that in middle school. That's good, uh, cell phones. So, you know, it's really, to me, it really, and I, and I know you guys are working on this, I'm just saying it anyways, but this, this whole aspect of civility and decency and listening, being able to listen to somebody that you really don't agree with, just to keep your mouth shut and listen to them and think before you. It's so important and it's something that I feel like our country is really starting to, to have a serious problem with at every level and it's just awful, you know? So, I mean, that's my, that's my view of, of a lot of this, that kind of the big picture of it is civility, decency, acceptance.
So I think the word that I would also throw in there is empathy.
Yes.
Empathy is the core of what we need to develop, both in our students, in ourselves, in our society. Um, I can't fix all of society, I can only work on it here at the school. Um, but, uh, but there is, there's a deep and driving desire to build empathy. And this is a discussion that has already started in the cores, um, the teachers in the cores in the middle school as to how do we develop that? How do we create that kind of space? I'll say that the admin team, so, so our administrative team has been reading a book called Better Conversations, um, which is built around that same idea. And it's because we realized that if we're going to be engaged in this work at this level, we need to have all the tools that we can for it. You know, so, so these are, you know, there's small pockets of it right now, they're not big enough. You know, they're, they're just, you know, we're barely getting a foothold, but we're, we're trying to expand that and, and start working on that with our teachers, working on it with our students. Um, you know, this is, we're, we're going to, this is a conversation topic that's going to be on the table for years to come. And, and it's not a bad thing. It's just, right now, it's a very exhausting thing. Um, and so, um, so I think that we, you know, the end of the school year, um, there's a lot of anxiety around the end of the school year that is added into this right now. And so once we get some fresh summer rest and are able to come back, I think we're going to be able to develop some better ways to work with our students and to create those spaces for conversation.
And I just want to reiterate with Scott so that I think as a board, we really appreciate what we threw you into. Um, and, and you know, maybe we didn't know at the time, we said, this is opening up the discussion. This is, it was kind of the opposite of Montpelier. They'd spent two years and that was the culmination. And for us, this was kind of the beginning and it was getting everybody aware. And I don't know, you know, we jump-started it. If we hadn't done this, maybe this conversation would have taken years to percolate to the surface. Um, so I really appreciate all the effort put into it and kind of the learning and stumbling.
Right. Don't hear them, we begrudge it. Please don't hear them.
No, I, I don't hear that at all, but I do know the energy that it's taken and kind of the brain power that you've had to put to this. And I'm wondering where are we going right now, looking at the project?
I just have one more question before you that. Um, and I, I echo what you just said. So one thing, I didn't, or I don't think we anticipated was any kind of safety concern. Um, and I know law enforcement was here on Monday and we heard some things in the comments tonight that were, you know, we heard the word war. So do you have safety concerns about the flag being up at the end of the school year?
Do I have concerns?
Like undue, I guess.
No, there's, there's no, there's no immediate threat. We did not receive, you know, so in our conversation with Montpelier High School, their threats were very real and very, um, and very clear. were very real and very, and very clear. We have not faced those kinds of threats. Most of what we have experienced are students who don't feel safe and express concern, but we have not had direct threats that have been against the school. But we also appreciate that our law enforcement, you know, was available and here for us. And, and in particular, I would say, that also know our kids, you know? So, I would say that, you know, we had one of the sheriff's deputies here who is a regular member of law enforcement who knows our kids and can be of a view that's, that's very helpful. And, and it's a difficult thing. Law enforcement has a very different view around the Black Lives Matter flag. And so, so I think that, you know, we, these are continuous conversations that we have to have. And this is the difficulty in the, kind of the navigating this world is, is very difficult, but doable.
So where are we headed with this? Do you have an answer?
I think, I think we know where we're headed with it.
Tonight, I'm talking about.
Well, and that's sort of where I'm going to speak to you. I think, I mean, we've, we've been through this draft. I don't know if Jonathan was.
I wasn't at the last meeting, I did, I did read it.
You have read it?
Yeah.
And do you have any, any personal challenges with it? Can you stand behind it?
I was thinking about one, and I don't remember if it's like the third or fourth. I don't remember reading glasses, so I'm sorry about that.
All students have the right to an education free of bias and discrimination based on their identity.
No, it wasn't that one, I think it might have been the.
Our schools must be committed to honoring students and staff diversity in all its forms. That's the fourth one.
Maybe it's the third one, I'm sorry, we don't have to read the whole thing, but there was something about.
That's the line I was just reading.
Oh, okay.
All students have the right to an education free of bias and discrimination based on their identity. We recognize that bias comes in many forms, explicit and implicit, historical and contemporary.
Yeah, no, that's.
And we changed that a little bit.
Well, we discussed it.
Yeah.
Well, we added indiscrimination.
Right. No, I think that's good, yeah. That's good. There was, there was one line, was it feel, we want students to feel, where is that? Feel, feel, we want students to feel safe or feel.
All of our students should be valued and feel they belong? Is the feel.
Yeah, I mean, I might just say that, you know, all students belong, or maybe more affirmative rather than, you know, I don't know. That was my sense, is that all students are valued, all students are whatever. Semantics perhaps, but.
And I think we might, we had discussed the, the language around explicit, implicit, historical, contemporary, and how to make that easier for people to read. So I think there's some wordsmithing still to be done. But I think if we as a board feel that this goes in the direction we're hoping to take this conversation, and we feel that it would be valuable to let the community and the other school boards, I mean, I think we've discussed the fact that, that we might like to see this adopted across the supervisory, I mean, if, if that, if that works. And I think maybe we're where we need to be now without, you know, maybe, we've been sort of rushed at the beginning, and I'm feeling like maybe really crafting this and getting input of others, if it's going to be adopted without supervisory, I mean, we're probably going to get some input from under-student who have feelings about it. And perhaps we just want to leave it where it is now until we have an opportunity to get that input and have the larger conversation about it.
I like where it is now. I think, I think that it's, it's easy reading, easy understanding, it's very clear. And I, I feel comfortable with how it reads.
I have just the first statement. Maybe this is looking at it as the glass half empty, but all of our students, staff, and other stakeholders make a positive contribution to our community. That's not true. But they can make a positive contribution, based on your own individual's experiences and backgrounds. I mean, some of your individual experiences and backgrounds are horrific and you therefore don't make positive contribution, but you can. So all of our, I would just insert the word can make a positive contribution, because otherwise I think it's a little too can be. Rose color glasses.
Oh, I think.
I mean, it's what you aspire into.
Thank you for what you say. I wish you had sent it at the full board meeting. But what I wanted to say about the policy, something that I just shared about the executive committee is that it should just stay still in the draft format and.
We don't have a policy at all.
No, I know, so stay, I know that you're working on it, so.
We aren't, we haven't even begun, you know?
Yeah.
This is the first step.
Keep working on it, on it, and get involved in the same work that the staff will get involved and as, so unless we have had the bias training and maybe do a partnership with Montpelier, try to create that policy together, I think it's, it's just fair to the students and the, and the staff to go through the, you know, like, address our own bias, you know, do the training, like, do the work with them before you draft the policy.
Before we carve it into stone.
Before you carve it into stone. That's my only, you know.
And I'm noticing that there's no adoption on our agenda anyway. So everybody, we're kind of, we'll sit with it, mull it over the summer, come back to it.
We'll think about a goal.
We'll think about a goal. Yes, for the, a goal for the board, which probably should come before a policy discussion. Okay. Thank you.
Part of the goal can be to create policy.
Yeah.
This is hard, this is really hard work, yeah. I appreciate people's input and thoughts.
Yeah, and if people have wordsmithing or substantial, please send them along, you know, take the summer to percolate.
Yeah, great.
So can I echo Kari here for just a second and just ask you also to think about, when you used the word accountable in your last bullet, what does that look like to the board? Right? If you're going to hold.
We talked about that last time.
Yeah. If you're going to hold us accountable, let's just be clear about what those things are that you want to hold us accountable to.
Well, that's where policy comes in.
Exactly. That's why I say I'm echoing.
It's one thing to have Candy Land statements about me.
Exactly.
It's another thing to say thou shalt do this. If you want to work here.
Yeah, and we, that definitely, that was good, yeah. Thanks. Okay? Okay, I'm something very mundane and probably. One of our goals was to try and fill out board observation forms as we go to events and anything, just as part of the monitoring piece of the school to get a board perspective. And the, and I'm as guilty as I know the rest of you are, sort of filling this out when we go to school events, what we notice in terms of the learning outcomes. We're not evaluating how it is, but do we see evidence that transferable skills are being used? Thank you so much, Shannon. Good luck.
See you at graduation.
She's supposed to be there, I'm supposed to be there.
Oh, yeah, we'll give it to you, the award, I know, we'll give it to you, the award.
You get it in a bigger audience than this. We all forget. Thank you very much.
As long as you show up.
And it's just kind of a piece of the monitoring that the board does, a third sort of piece. And I know it's hard, you guys that have students here come to events all the time.
And do a bad job of it.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm as guilty. We were doing a good job for a while and we're not doing it, but at least to think about when you go to events, put your board hat on for a few minutes, take your parent hat off.
Does this exist electronically that we can like snag in the moment? Because I don't.
We should each have a copy of it.
We, it can't be a Google Doc, but we can send you a copy of it.
It's just a Word version.
Yeah. We do, there is a Word version somewhere.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking that we, maybe you could just put up a Word version on the website.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So I meant something and I could pull it up?
Yeah.
Ooh, wow, it's turned into this.
That's a great idea.
And then when, when you fill these out, that's what, we pass it in?
Well, it's supposed to come to me and I will have a little envelope here with ones from past years.
We just haven't done much this.
But we haven't. And when we were getting student performance presentations here, we were doing them right after the presentation. And that was really effective. And then we had a quick conversation, which actually was really good. And we should have done that last month. I didn't even know that.
We had the presentation.
I didn't know that that was coming. Were you here for that?
No, but we had musicians.
Yes, but we had, we had a presentation of an Algebra II STEM project that was just pretty much mind-blown, yeah. Really, really impressive.
So then that would be the process, we would process them collectively after?
Yes, if I had thought about it, I would have done that.
Maybe we don't have.
Yes, and we just sit here for five minutes and you actually, in the best of all worlds, you kind of look at this as you're watching the presentation. And yes, I'm noticing that, yes, I see evidence of that, just jot down what it is. And then we can talk about what we noticed.
Yep. And then where would we go with that?
Well, if we were doing it diligently and we had a whole lot of evidence, then we as a board could say, we're seeing that kids are, what might be the, using their transferable skills, you know? We notice the transferable skills are being used in presentations and we feel confident, we see evidence that kids are being taught those skills.
To complement test data and report cards and.
It's another piece of evidence of learning outcomes.
I'm, I'm with you. My, my bigger question is, so then where do we go with that evidence? Is that just a satisfying?
You know, I suppose if we were really good at it, it would be included in a monitoring report.
I think so.
You know, it would go to Bill as a piece of, here's, we're monitoring this kind of learning. It's a really good question and.
We never really got that.
We are here, yeah.
That's what I was. Fill out the form.
Exactly. Okay, then I put that on there because it was part of our board calendar, just to kind of check in, it's part of the monitoring. It's probably a part we didn't do as well. Reports to the board, Central Mont Career Center.
They had their last meeting. Four o'clock.
Bill, Bill has had a discussion with John Pendelva and hopefully that will improve. Student we got administration, do you have any more to tell us?
I did want to share something with you. So, we've been talking about having a guide to report cards and transcripts. We have a guide for the transcript that will be going out. This hasn't been disseminated widely yet, so just let me know. So, so our teachers haven't gotten a copy yet. We just got this, the report card and transcripts that will be coming out primarily for seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade, because this is really around the standard-based report card and transcript. And, and it tries to give a little bit of the background, but then this is the report card explanation with some information, and the back page is the transcript information.
Will you send transcripts home to those kids also?
Yes.
And you have done that in the past?
No, transcripts usually are not something that gets in out very regularly, but that is a part of our reporting in the proficiency system because we want to see growth over time. And as you look at the, as you look at the back page, the, the left-hand column, there will be there, there's three bubbles below that, but the left-hand column are the courses and the scores that students get in courses. The right-hand side is their progress towards meeting our graduation proficiency. So the proficiency-based graduation requirement. And so that's what their transcript is going to show in all of the SLOs, right? So that's, that's the important thing. This is just an example of one SLO, the literacy one. And so, so that is, that is the guide for that. There is still obviously a lot more to explain around proficiency-based learning, and so just, I'm going to hold it up at a great distance so that you don't see it. But there is, there is a guidebook that is coming out that is going to be more along the lines of proficiency, just showing in Malay language. And shows, and I would highlight this little section right here, which is the actual pathway and what it looks like. And so it's very simple language around you, you know, you begin in seventh grade, starting to develop a personalized learning plan, you know, and then in, as you move towards high school, you start to develop an interest in an area that you might want to study or a goal that you have towards college, career, military, trade, any of those kinds of things. And just tries to plot out some of that course in general and then some of the additional information. So the transcript guide will still be in here to help people understand. And it's just more information about what a proficiency-based learning system looks like and what it is. And this will be ready for our families as we return in the fall. And so, so this will be provided to our teachers by the time we come to in-service and to our families as we get started in the new school year, so that we just, you know, these are the questions that keep being asked. And so we're trying to get more answers to them and more clear. So, the clarity was really important. I can't say it anymore because I've said it too many times. Working with someone else who is not familiar with it to help put this into a better language has been very helpful. And it's cleared up some of the misconceptions and some of the things that are, that are hanging there for us. It's also, putting together this guide has helped us understand also some of the shortcomings in the way that we're using Infinite Campus in reporting the scores. And we're developing at our in-service next year, we're spending a full day around the grading, reporting, Infinite Campus use, so that we can clean that up and have a common message across all teachers. And we feel like that's really important because that goes back to the goal of communicating with families. And if we can't get this right, this is going to be the downfall, right? And we don't want that to be what ruins of what we feel is a really good proficiency system and that we're building is not communicating well enough with our families. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. We felt like this was an important guide to get out immediately because we're putting out report cards and transcripts in another couple of weeks. And so that's why we're kind of the order of how these things have occurred.
What do you anticipate in the other document?
This document, we're shooting for the beginning of August, so, I mean, this is a pretty good draft at this point in time, but our goal is to have this ready for the beginning of August. And just so you know, some of the changes that have been made to these documents in their draft form have come out of my student group. So they've been looking at this stuff as it's been coming along. Our department head, some of our teachers, we've been trying to share this as much as possible so that we get feedback from them to try to create messages that are, that are succinct. We also need to hit up some parents around this one, that's one of the next stages, we just hadn't gotten from this year. And then we'll talk to some of our parents over the summer about, okay, does this make sense, does it seem helpful?
Can I make a brief comment about the Infinite Campus? Just really quick.
I had an issue with my son's math class and I was trying to figure out why he had the grades he had. And I went in and I found that the entire month of May had not been reported by the teacher. But the interesting thing about that was, not so much that it hadn't been reported, I talked to the math department and there's something that teachers have to do that's easy to forget to do or to not do to get the grade metric. An entire month had gone by and not one student or parent noticed, which said to me, people aren't looking at the Infinite Campus. It's way too confusing.
I absolutely agree with you on that. And so there are ways that, Infinite Campus has improved the product a lot in the last few months even. And we are going to, we're going to show our teachers what parents see. That's one thing that our teachers just are not, they're not clear on.
It's bizarre, the teachers and the parents are the same thing.
Well, so, so, yeah, it is, but we're trying to get ahead of our, of that, because teachers have really used it for a grade book and not as a communication tool. So, so we're turning it to more of a communication tool, because as you're right, it's terrible layout the way it is right now. But that is being fixed and we're going to try to clean it up even some more before next year, we have to. Like, it's just not, it's not communicating what we needed to communicate.
I have a question about graduation. You said Leslie was going to send us the schedule.
Yeah, Leslie's been out a little bit, so, yeah, she's, I'll have her send it tomorrow.
Just tell me what time the award ceremony is on Sunday.
The award ceremony on Sunday is at three o'clock.
Thank you. And, yeah, okay, that's, I just, last time you said that was coming, so I forgot in my mind.
I didn't, I didn't realize that Leslie was going to be up for a few days.
It's okay. Finance committee.
Oh, Adrian?
Yes.
Can we move on? I think St. Jennifer here reminds me that we're going to talk about flags under the administration report.
Can we just leave that for right now? It's nine o'clock.
Sure, I would just.
I just, let's.
I'll talk to Stephen and we can raise it at the next issue, the next meeting.
If, if we feel like it's a board issue.
Well, if Black Lives Matter is a board issue, then all flags are bad before most board issues come out.
Yeah, that'd be great. Finance.
There's a report in the, in the larger packet. We're doing well. And you, I think there's a proposal to spend some money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to put together a request to move a fair amount of that, so I know the board wants to give a 4% cushion, we have some pretty big expenses in capital coming up, and rather than, I mean, we think we've done really well in terms of building a capital budget, but we're going to need to transfer some of that money over to capital for things like track and parking lot and those big expenses that we, that we're going to incur, so that we don't have to go borrow any money. But I think that overall, the biggest part of our gains in our fund balance are because we underestimate the amount of money that we're going to take in for tuition. And so that's, so also along the lines with some spending, just areas of savings that we can do, but that accounts for a smaller fraction. The biggest gains that we have are around tuition, and that's why we have such a comfortable balance right now.
And specifically, we're currently, our fund balance is at 7.4%, and our target is 4%, putting us about $490,000 over.
And there's actually, Lori wanted me to let you know, it's actually only about 4.25 once we correct for a couple of other pieces that are coming in here right again. So, not to overspend ourselves, but we are going to ask for some of that money to be transferred over to capital, a fair amount.
Will you do that in the fall?
Yeah, well, you've got to close the books before we can actually ask that of you, and so we're going to do that. And I think also speaking back, you know, back to Jennifer's point earlier, some of the training, we're going to ask that some of this money be applied towards some training for our teachers, and then also some interventions for our students as well. And so, so we do have some things that we might be there. Oh, and things like a steamer for the pigeons is the one that is going bad, and it's like $30,000 piece of equipment, so.
Yeah, we just got one at the car, really expensive.
Actually, the interesting thing, I'm sorry to take the time, but Esmond Pillar doesn't use theirs, they just got a new one when they had the renovation, so we're probably going to buy theirs off of them. So we only keep the money in the district and if you go. For some reason, they want to charge us full price, but we'll negotiate that.
And school start time subcommittee, do we need to hear any more than we?
No, I think you heard it all.
Great.
Explore the surface.
So action agenda, we have a bunch of things to do, we got explanations for them in the full board meeting. The first one is to approve the blanket authorization for check orders for FY 1819 in case we don't meet as a board.
And we signed that casting around?
Yeah, there's several. Oh, now we've already signed.
These are all signed. So is there a motion to approve the blanket authorization?
I'm with it.
Scott and a second. Questions about that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, do I have to read this, do you have the motion to award the revenue anticipation note?
I don't think I.
Isn't there a motion I have to read somewhere?
It's maybe in that packet.
Oh, I have, yeah, I do have it.
You have it, do you want to read it to us?
Okay. So to award revenue anticipation note bid to Community Bank NA for the time period of July 2nd, 2018 through June 28th, 2019, for the following amount and interest rate, $4,963.75, and the interest rate is 2.7%.
$4,000, which doesn't sound right.
Four million.
Oh, yeah, it is four million.
It's getting late here.
So the projected interest being $132,900.
And that's the difference between what we borrowed the money from and then what we invested in, and Lori alluded to about a 1% gain in interest. Is there a motion?
So I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Carl and Jonathan, any questions about that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And then there's an investment bid, I'll let you catch up.
Investment bid says to award the investment bid to Community Bank NA for the time period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, for the following interest rate, and it says, oh, so this whole thing belongs to you, 32, would that, like, where is it?
Here.
The investment bids on page nine.
In this big packet? I know I wrote it in here.
Yeah, this isn't just specific to us.
Okay, so there's some.
So the summary bid is also on page nine.
Yeah, they're there. I know I wrote somewhere. Yeah. So a motion for the investment bid?
Seven.
Karen and a second?
A second.
Carl, discussion about that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries. A motion to reserve $35,555 from technology, I assume that's coming from the fund balance?
Yeah, so it's, it's technology funds that were not fully expended this year, but to be held over for next year for additional technology expenses. Generally, we've held it as part of the capital fund, and so it's still held in that area, but it's.
Have you moved?
Move it from capital to.
Keep it in the technology.
Yes, of course, I'm sorry.
So I'll move.
Did you get that motion? A motion to reserve $35,555 from the technology line of the budget, general budget this year to next year's budget.
Correct.
And Carl, move it a second.
I'll second that.
George? Any discussion about that? I know it's getting late, I'm trying to go as fast as I can. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. And then we have a job nomination form for a work-based learning coordinator, and do you just want to quickly give us, this sounded new to me.
It's actually not new. So Kimma Keller has been working here as our internship coordinator, she is, and that was a non-teacher position, but she now has her work-based learning coordinator teaching certificate that she received through peer, or is receiving through peer review, she hasn't gotten the actual paperwork, she's been approved. And so we are moving her into the teacher category now, so that she, she is actually, we're improving, moving her from part-time, .5 to non-teaching, to .6 teaching. This is an important position, actually, any student who's in an internship or activity that is outside of the school, their program really has to be signed off by a work-based learning coordinator, somebody with this certification. That's why she's been working on it, we helped fund it so that we could have it, because if we don't have somebody on site, we have to contract with the Career Center, where they have somebody with this to be able to do all of that work. So it's best that we have somebody in-house, because it's just so much easier for us to do. I would suspect over time, given the multiple pathways that we have and the work that she does, that this will, position will be increased as we can increase it, because her workload is pretty big. If you came to our mentor appreciation night, you saw a large bit of work that Kimma Keller does. All of those mentors generally come through her and the work that she does. And so she is a great asset to our school, and I could go on for days about what of value a part of our program this is, but she certainly is a great part of our faculty.
So is there a motion to accept her nomination?
I'm with it.
Scott and a second?
A second.
Carl, discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries. Approve the board orders, I don't have them right here. Motion, Julie, this is, have you seen them?
Yeah, I did.
So a motion to approve the board orders?
So I'd.
Karen, a second. George, questions about them or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries. Future agenda items. Should we decide on the third Wednesday in August for our next board meeting?
I, that's up to you guys. I'm here, we have teachers back doing work by the sec, by the first Wednesday.
You know what, I'm not going to be here the first Wednesday in August.
I'm not either.
Okay, so what's. I'm going to be in New York, I'm going to be in Quebec.
It's the first Wednesday, I missed the first.
No, it's like the seventh or eighth, the second is a Thursday. Oh, so the first is a Wednesday.
Oh.
I am not here. Yeah, but we're going to.
We better retreat the next day.
Let's go, let's do, so what's the third one?
The third Wednesday is the 15th, and.
August 15th, that's early. Does that sound doable for people?
We'll be resting.
Okay. So August 15th.
Bachelor.
Hello.
13th is 14th, I should be back. Okay, so we're all set on that. I think we have plenty of agenda items. And we'll figure out after the second, or after the 15th, whether we need a board retreat or not, and we'll go from that. Board communication, maybe that's where all those emails should come in, in board communication, as opposed to board comments.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that.
Can I ask the communication question?
Yeah.
How many people got the newsletter this week? Parents.
I don't think I got it.
So I just sent it to you, because I knew you probably didn't get it, tried to send it to you, and I don't have a right.
Comcast.
No email address for George. And Karen, you should have just got it.
I should have gotten it.
It's not showing up on.
I have both of them.
Okay.
If you email me, that's me.
All right.
Comcast.
Adrienne, can you just forward that to?
I can do that. I'll put it on my little list so they can see. Did that come like this afternoon?
Yeah, it's three days.
There it is.
I don't, I didn't get it.
I just sent it to you.
That's what I mean.
Here.
Oh, right now, okay, I haven't seen that. Letter to George. Okay. I can do that.
Mine says yesterday.
The parents, oh, Karen, you know this. Thank you very much. That was a long, hard meeting, I've been sitting for a long time.
No, I am.
I got it, I got it. No running out of parking lot anymore. Did everybody sign all these, the executive committee? Okay, thank you very much.